Linda? I'm gonna grab my agenda for this meeting. I'll be right back.
Yeah, I'll follow that up. You know what? I don't know, David.
But you know, Tony, one way it should come from the top and down, from the feds to the bottom, but it doesn't, the leadership doesn't want it. We're creating, we're creating a separate house of citizens. I know Harris. You know, I know, it's just like, it's just like, if you retire, if you retire from the federal government or the province, you're in the MO, MRE, or MNR. Your benefits aren't there for life.
Yeah.
But they are, but when you retire as a teacher, they end. Like, talk to Roxanne.
Yeah, I know, but I've seen mine care before.
See, mine don't, but I have to pay them. But I think I was paying them. Teachers could pay for it. Roxanne would be paying for it, she's not covered by you. But when I retired, I had the option of going with Johnson &amp; Johnson or the retired teachers materialized. And I offered, as I'm still on council, I dropped it all. I dropped it all. Now, getting the hell spending account, I'm giving you something, Tony, $2,500, or you can pay for a bridge.
No, no.
Or you can pay for a bridge.
Yeah.
And for the 15, 20, that's $12,000.
It's a certain percentage.
Yeah.
I hear ya.
So just, but talk to me, Georgia, our employees get 85 sick days a year.
Yeah, I'll have to.
That's one day more than a firefighter's day. They work 84 days.
Really?
If I'm wrong, then tell me.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
Check with the LTD. And what I don't know about LTD is what percent, when a person goes on LTD, what percent do they collect of their former salary? Is it 75%? Do you know, Esther, when an employee goes on LTD, what percent of their salary? Is it 80%?
Eighty percent.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So I will call our second committee of the whole meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? I know. This is relative to the waste management. No, this is, this is actually committee of the whole. So, yes, correct. And so I'm taking it that there are no declarations of pecuniary interest. And I'll call on Mr. Shelton to provide us with an introduction. And we'll go forward with the presentation if we could.
Very short, Mr. Mayor. Our Director of Public Works has been leading the initiative with the Northern Six to call the RFP for our solid waste and recycling contract. As you recall, we entered into a contract for a 10-year period some time ago with our five partners in the N6. And that contract comes due September of next year. So a lot of work has been done while in advance to ensure that there is sufficient time for a new contractor or the contractor to obtain equipment and so on that's required. And a lot of effort has gone into this and discussion with the three councils to ensure that some of the items such as customer service and so on are dealt with, and the director's going to touch on that. So the director's going to take us through a presentation, and we have other staff such as our Director of Legal Services present in case there are questions of a legal nature as well. So I'll turn it over to our director.
Thank you, Mr. Kamutu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll just get started with the presentation, and we can have some questions and answers after that, and some fulsome discussion. So just to give some background on this project, the current contract runs, as the CAO just mentioned, from September 2007 to September 2017. So again, as previously mentioned, the N6 directors started discussing this contract, the new contract, in February of 2014. We knew that this would be a lot of work. And actually, at the beginning of the discussions, both Richmond Hill and New York Region also came to the meetings to discuss this project as we move forward. After a little while, we decided that we needed a little bit of expert help, so we went out and got a consultant. That RFP was released in May 2015 and awarded to EXP in June 2015. Luckily for us, the person that is working on this project is the same that worked on the last contract. A gentleman by the name of John Smith. Throughout this process, we've also been keeping the CAO, all of the N6 CAOs involved with a few meetings, and there's three of them there. One in the summer of last year, just in January, at the beginning of this year, and then in the fall, just before the RFP, just before this meeting. So the RFP itself, for the contract, was released on June 28th. And we had three submissions on September 13th. So in October, in October and November, the N6 directors got together, did the evaluation. We had some site visits for customer service, and we also did a background reference checks. And today, we're recommending an award. Previous council reports, we talked about the tender preparation as far back as January 2015. Update in October and November. And then throughout 2016, also kept council informed with two other reports on the February 1st and November 7th. So getting down to the selection of a proponent and that process. With procurement, we conducted a fair, open, and competitive bidding process. One example was, within the RFP, the weighting of the evaluation criteria was known to all before they bid. The municipal representatives from the N6, almost all directors, were on the evaluation team. And it wasn't just us around the N6. We also had the assistance from that expert consultant. And because New Market led, we also had help from procurement, legal, and customer service from New Market. Another thing we did to keep the process fair is we had a two-envelope system. So as the directors were having the technical evaluation done, we did not open the pricing envelope. So it was an unbiased report. So with that, we did get, we think that we got the best overall value, with 60% of the entire mark being technical and 40% being the cost, the dollar figures. Now, that 40% is actually high. We usually have it around between 20 and 30%, but we thought for this type of project, we would increase the weighting of those costs proportional to 40% of the entire one. We also conducted detailed reference checks through all the proponents. And we followed up with, as I mentioned, site visits from our customer service rep and a few others from the N6 customer service side. So during the evaluation, New Market set high standards. We included customer service within that and a detailed breakdown of what they would provide for customer service. We talked about their CVOR, basically their license to carry the goods, and we had that as a high standard. And we also increased the information collection and the communication that the proponent would provide to the towns. Things like that include the GPS tracking. We've actually increased the amount of pings, so that is the amount of times where the truck would be registered, so we understand exactly where it is within the route. There's gonna be a website put together by the proponent and a customer service reporting. So within that, our customer service reps would be able to go into their system almost in real time and take a look to see how their customer service reps are doing, how they're answering, how quickly, those sort of things, all the number of calls that come in, et cetera. Also, during the evaluation, we did, as I mentioned, did the detailed reference checks. I think we went above and beyond with regard to questions that we posed to the other municipalities who are using the three proponents. We had the customer service site visit, so just the physical checking of what would be implemented if the proponents were to be successful. And again, I want to thank Bonnie and her staff and the other customer service reps from the N6 that went and did that, just for due diligence purposes. And we also got the double checking of the consultant, who is the industry expert, just to make sure that we were on the right path, we were within the ballpark for a lot of things. And he recommended us moving forward with this recommendation today. Aside of the evaluation process, we also did a little bit of cost comparisons to other municipalities, just to make sure that we were within the ballpark. And so the consultant and I took a look at other municipalities, what they were paying for material. It was very difficult to compare apples to apples. Some had processing in there, some had their recycling in two streams, some didn't have SSO, those sort of things. But more or less, as you can see in the report, we are within, within good reason of the other municipalities. During the contract, we have a multitude of things within the contract that we will be doing. The N6 operational group have, through the managers and coordinators, have quarterly meetings with themselves, with the N6 group, and then with the proponent or the contractor. So that sort of keeps checks and balances in place. There's processes that come out of those meetings and additional communication to be given to staff. We also have biannual audits. The region audits this, this contract every couple of years and takes a look at, to see if we are doing our due diligence, best management practices, et cetera, within the contract itself as it's going on. Customer service and real-time access, as I mentioned before, our customer service group or any customer service group from the N6 can log on to their system in the future and see exactly what they're doing with respect to customer service. We have liquidated damages, as we had before, but we've actually increased them and upgraded them within this new contract. And for the first time, we actually have incentives, which I'll get to in the next slides. So we have a contractor performance policy on an annual basis. We actually, as you know, we have hired a curbside waste inspector for the, for New Market. And that customer, oh, sorry, that curbside waste inspector works in conjunction with customer service, just to make sure, it's basically an infield check on the proponent or on the contractor. And we also have strong termination rights within this contract if the, there is a failure of the contractor for a multitude of things. So this is a few of the liquidated damages that is within the new contract. As you can see, there is a multitude of them for a wide range of things with regard to collecting untagged bags above the bag limit, to customer service, to GPS indications. So it runs the gamut of our checks and balances. As mentioned, we have the incentives. So again, based on some of the KPIs, we have, we do, we could pay a bonus or incentives to the contractor if they reach these milestones. And again, these are for all of the N6. So this slide indicates our current contract, GFL, and this is basically the trends in the number of calls that we get and what they're for. As you can see, we did have some issues in the first quarter of 2014 or around the last quarter of 2013. But since then, there have been a drastic reduction in the number of calls and number of issues with regard to GFL currently doing, currently doing the collection. And here, I just wanted to actually pause and note that with, and I'll get to the costs in a minute, but the average cost per household for curbside collection contract will be, if this is approved, be going up to $8.84 per month, based on the 2016 tonnages. And again, taking a look at value for your dollar. And again, that's up for seven, from $7 for curbside collection for the contract itself. So some additional highlights of the contract. As this council requested, an increase in customer service, so we have this written within the contract that the contractor has to do the majority of the customer service, be the frontline contact, get back to the resident in, within the two days, and a lot of the KPIs based on customer service, specifically with regard to this council asking for an increase in the level of customer service versus what we have now. Frequency of collection as is, we didn't really want to touch it, it seems to be working. Annual adjustments, this is based on CPI. We have a maximum of up to 5%. From 0 to 5% is the only range that the contract will go up year to year. And that has served us well over the past nine years. The increase in the cost of the contract has actually been slightly less than the national CPI. So it has served us very well, so we maintain that same wording within this new contract. As I spoke to before, the GPS, the tracking of trucks, we have increased the number of pings, so instead of seeing the truck every two minutes, I believe it's every 30 seconds or so. So we'll be able to keep track of the trucks on the GPS with the three GPS units. And again, we also have clauses, as you've seen in the previous slides, that 90% of the trucks have to be working at a certain amount of time within the month. One of the big changes that we're asking for in this new contract is the bin delivery. So we do have a multitude of facilities, four to five, that we do sell or give the, or replace, the blue bins and the green bins. If this goes through, it would actually be the contractor be able to deliver those bins with a call from the resident, and within two weeks, it shows up at the end of their driveway. So it's, they don't actually have to come in anymore, they can. We will still have that opportunity available for them at the other facilities. However, if they just want to call, they don't want to go out, the bins will be delivered right to the end of their driveway. Another option is that, oh, sorry, another point within this, the new contract, is that we have an option of battery collection. So we do have this option to do it up to twice a year if we decide to exercise that. And again, that's for the entire N6. That is something new that, that this contract has in it. Similar to the current contract, we have fleet, for the fleet, all of the trucks will start the contract new and, in this case, never be more than 10 years old. And every five years, they will get a repaint, so that it keeps the look of the trucks fresh. And the length of this contract is eight years with possible two one-year extensions. This is best management practice throughout the industry. A large portion of the contract is, for the cost, is the, the trucks, the cost of the trucks. And so eight years is understood throughout the industry as best management practice to pay off that, those pieces of equipment. So it just makes sense to have that term of contract. So what are the next steps? As you heard this morning, we will be doing an extension of the existing contract from the September 2017 to the end of December. Obviously, I'm here today for New Market, however, we do have the other five partners within the N6. And these are the dates that the other municipalities are going, some as early as tomorrow. As we move forward, there is a memorandum of understanding that, that was requested by this council in January, and we had, we have approval for that. The other municipalities will also be signing this memorandum of, of understanding. It is basically an agreement within and between the municipalities as to how to deal with the contract. And then obviously, there's the signing of the contract itself to move forward. And as the CAO mentioned, why we're doing this, why we're trying to do this early in advance of the ending of the contract is because of the ordering of those vehicles. Takes approximately 12 months to order those vehicles. So again, we wanted new vehicles to start the new contract, and so we're trying to give those 12 months for that contractor to order those trucks to start brand new. The other thing that this council asked for is that increase in customer service. So again, we were giving that time for them to get their customer service center either improved, in this case, or up and running in others. This gives us all of next year to do education and promotion, if there's any changes. Obviously, there's a service level change or service level increase that's gonna be happening with this contract. But again, that allows us to get our education and promotion out for those unique changes that, that will be happening. So we hope to commence the services of collection in January of 2018. With that, it's the end of the presentation.
Thank you. Huge undertaking. I don't know how, how long we've had this in the brewing. Are the, are the, these prices contingent on everyone in the N6 signing on?
That is correct.
Okay, good, all right, thank you. Counselor Hampton and Regional Counselor.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Chris, could you tell us, you know, we have a, a cost previously of $7 and $8.84 projected for the future. And can you explain to us what the most significant cost driver was in seeing this 25% increase and what you feel it was? Just so when we speak with the public, I can let them know.
So there are a few things with respect to the increase, but again, that would be up to the proponents. But from what the understanding is, is that it has been a long time since we were, since we went out with an RFP for the proponents. And as I mentioned before, there's actually a restriction within the current contract, and same with the new contract, that there's only so much increase, it's only a maximum of 5% that the contract can increase year over year. So for example, going from 2014 to 2015, the increase of the contract based on that CPI equation was .14%. So again, it restricts that increase in the cost year over year to those, based on that, based on that calculation. So when we started this process way back in 2014, actually, sorry, when we got the consultant, the expert, his estimate was within this ballpark is what he was thinking would be the increase in those costs. So relative to a multitude of things, whether it be the Canadian dollar, whether it be labor cost, what have you, but again, that would be up to the contractor themselves to tell you exactly why the increase came. As I mentioned before, however, seeing those dollar figures, I did, we did reach out to other municipalities to make sure that we were within those ballpark figures. And based on the six or seven comparative municipalities that we got, those numbers are within an appropriate range.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regional Counselor.
Thanks, I have a series of questions. The, what would be the logic of, so if we say never more than 10 years old for a vehicle, 10 years seems like quite a long time. I think that's about the longest you might want a truck on the road, but I'm no expert. But let's say that's, obviously, we say that, and we want, we don't want to say only four or five years, because we'll pay for that in the contract, right? Like, it'll be more if we say four-year-olds, so we say 10. So what would be the logic for turning around, though, and saying that they all need to be new at the start of the term? If a contractor has or is existentially dealing with us, or it's one that deals with other municipalities around, or whoever is gonna win it, why would we make them, replace them all, start afresh, when we're clearly okay with the concept of vehicles that are six and eight and 10 years old, six or eight years from now? It seems like we're built in a requirement that's a cost driver, but doesn't seem consistent with the fact that we're okay with older vehicles eventually.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the concept of getting new trucks is that there would be less issues with those trucks right from the beginning. Understanding that within, that this contract is long, eight to 10 years, that eventually those trucks will be eight to 10 years old. So we are, we're not looking for trucks that were used in other municipalities for the majority of the trucks. There are some yard waste trucks and a couple other non-main trucks that are, that can be a little bit older, but those are ones that are, aren't as used frequently within this collection area, so they can be used for different areas. The trucks within the N6 will only, the main trucks for, the collection trucks for the N6 will only be for the N6. They wouldn't be doing part days in the N6 and then off to other municipalities for other days of the week. So again, we wanted fresh trucks, less, less percentage of breakdowns, of issues right from the beginning, obviously, a fresh coat of paint. We didn't want trucks from other municipalities that were four, five years old, not knowing exactly what the other municipalities were requiring out of that contractor.
Okay, I'm still missing, I mean, I understand what you're asking, what you asked for, and what you wanted, but I don't, I don't understand the logical connection between saying, we're okay with a six-year-old vehicle six years from now, but not a six-year-old vehicle today.
So, and again, we were sort of the, starting fresh with a new contract, we were hoping for the new trucks to start fresh, because a lot of times, some other trucks may be configured differently with regard to overcompaction at the site. And so what we did is, we were sort of looking for specific trucks that had, actually, you know what, I'll just go back one second to line item number six here. There are certain trucks out there that are used in other municipalities that do compact certain materials. And we wanted to make sure, we specified with the help of the consultant, what types of trucks we were looking for. Most of those trucks are fairly new style. And the other thing is, having an eight-year-old, sorry, an eight-year term of contract lets the proponent. sorry, an eight-year term of contract lets the proponent advertise over those eight to 10 years. So, that's why we, we wanted to do that. But for new trucks, it was, again, just starting new, starting fresh with a new contract.
Did anyone in any of the N6, N6 communities have a conversation or raised the possibility of not making that requirement and reducing perhaps the bid cost? Was it ever, did it ever come up? No?
It, it didn't come up with regard to the main trucks. However, there are backup trucks and other trucks used for yard waste that don't, that aren't moving all the time within the N6. They're not used 100% within the N6 just because of the logistics of the pickup and the timing. So, those trucks could be a little bit older. They, they're, they don't necessarily need to be new.
Okay. The, okay, this surprises me. It just doesn't make complete sense to me, but the other questions I have, the, it says proponents who do not meet the minimum threshold score of 70% in stage two did not proceed to stage three pricing. 70%? I can't, I'm trying to remember, but is that, what's the standard, what's, what is the range out there? Sounds high for, for, on technical points. Is that, is there a range out there that different communities, and I don't mean in this contract, but for procurement in general, that the, the amount they put on technical versus price?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If I understand the question correctly, it's 70% of the technical that is
Weighted.
Weighted at 60%.
It is weighted at what?
So, they have to have a 70% score.
Mm-hmm.
But that is only weighted as 60% of the overall score.
But, so, is this 70% requirement to move to stage three, is that consistent among other municipalities you're aware of in other bidding processes or do you have a sense of what that?
Through my experience in five municipalities, that is fairly standard.
Do you know what the region's requirement is?
I don't know. I, the region I didn't work for.
The, yeah, sorry, the, the blue and green bin management, that's now being taken on. It's one of the upsides of this contract that's being taken on by the provider. I guess maybe I could ask this to Bob Shelton, but I'm sorry, but I've got to ask it. That's something that's being lifted off of us. I suspect if we said this was being done by the town and we said we want to add this as a service in the town of New Market, there would be a budget associated cost with it. Is there a lift off of our budget this year because that's no longer a responsibility of the town?
It's going to appropriate shortly following our budget discussions. Mr. Sheldon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd have to ask the operations area if that has been taken into account in terms of the base and what that amounted to. I think my understanding is that it reduces storage requirements. That was one of the things. And also, I guess, the distribution of boxes at customer service, but if I could ask either Peter or yourself to deal with that.
Mr. Nohammer?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll defer to the director on that question.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the CIO was absolutely correct. It does decrease the amount of bins that we have to hold. Actually, the bins, we store them actually in one of the bays at the operations center, so we would no longer need to do that. However, as mentioned, it still is an as-is, so it's a delivery plus. So, we still have the as-is, which is the opportunity for the residents to go into those specific five facilities around the town and be able to purchase new or get a free replacement for those bins. So, those, that service level will still exist through customer service and through operations.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks. That's helpful. Did you, I think I heard you say that the escalator, escalator clause is identical as to the past contract? Is that correct?
That's correct. It served us very well in the previous contract and we wanted to repeat it in this one.
Now, I think I heard you say that the, the comparison of the cost per resident, the, the Counselor Hampton was speaking about, is comparable to other municipalities. What, what I didn't hear was, is there, is there, was there an attempt to, or is there any data that, that will clarify recent contracts that have been awarded in other major jurisdictions and their overall increase in cost? And what I'm talking about is that, it seems to me, we've had an escalator increase for the past contract that would allow it to go up according to cost, to CPI or other things, other drivers, and yet, there still is a 23.5% increase, boom, right here in one year. I could see if there was no escalator increase from 10 years ago, but how was there an escalator and a 23.5? And so, my question is, did we get some, were we able to get data or comparisons to other jurisdictions that have awarded garbage contracts in the last three years and what kind of increases they saw in the overall contract on a percentage basis?
Counselor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We did receive from our consultant, a number, I believe, was six or seven municipalities that had awarded their contract within the past three years. And what we looked at was the cost per ton of the different materials and when we took a look at those recently awarded contracts, we were within the ballpark of all of those.
On a cost-per-ton basis?
Correct.
And are you able to, so, I guess, all right, so, I asked some questions earlier about what we can and cannot disclose. Is that something I, those questions could be discussed here or?
Ms. Lister.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any concerns with the type of questions you're asking right now.
No, I mean about the ones, the, the questions I asked previously in relation to what can and can not, that you can necessarily do it, but can I, can I ask the questions that I asked previously in, in, through, via email about what is included in the report and what is not? Or should that be an in-camera discussion?
Our, our advice is that in public, we prefer to just stick with, that the highest valued proponent gives the best value and we'd like to stay away from breaking down into who was the lowest cost, who was the highest technical scoring.
Right. So, no, I, I, maybe I'm, I'll be more clear. I'm not about to ask what the breakdown was. I'm, I'm, what I want to do is have a public discussion about why we can or cannot do it according to what information you provided to me. Is there any risk in doing that in a public setting?
Yeah, I think that would be fine to discuss.
Yeah, I thought so. I just wanted to be sure. So, the, the question I asked previously, I think members of council saw it, was that at the region of York, they have a two envelope system as well and on tenders of any nature, the report comes to the region and you have a chart that lists exactly who bid, whether they're, even if they didn't open the envelope, their names on the list and then if it was open, their technical points, their, their cost points and their actual bid price. And then, all the information is there and readily available to be seen to the public and to ourselves in understanding this. My understanding is that's not the practice at the town of New Market. I'm not, I guess, my one question was, it wasn't clear from the memo we just received, was, is that, is that a, a practice that you're recommending we don't change at this point or is that a policy you're recommending we don't change at this point? Or, or, sorry, let me be one more, was it, was it somehow in the contract itself? Did it state that this is what we will do so that there's an expectation perhaps on the part of the bidders that that information wouldn't be disclosed?
Ms. Lister.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Generally speaking, we're held to a standard of fairness and we're evaluated on fairness based on our practices and policies. And so, our current practice is not to disclose that extra information and therefore, it could potentially be a surprise to proponents for us to do something different than our regular practice.
So, regardless of whether we stayed in the contract, they'd have a reason to believe it wasn't going to be disclosed because they've never seen us do it previously in simple work. Yeah. Okay. That seems to make some sense. I guess the, I would like to, as, as either direction or motion attached this, but maybe it's better as direction or as, or a new business tag or something, but I would like us to explore this concept more fully and, and then we can decide what we want to do based upon all the information staff can provide and that it would become a policy and people would know in advance. I have to say, I'm, I'm, I like that approach. I like the information that was received, but I will close by saying, I, for one person, I would like to, to go in camera before passing this. I, that's information that I understand we can't disclose because it's not in our practice to the public, but I certainly, I wouldn't feel right moving this without having that information myself.
Thank you. I'll need to, I need some procedural advice on that as to whether or not we can go in camera now without having public notice or I'll, I'll seek commissioner's advice on that. In the meantime, Counselor Quapis.
Just clarification on some of the SLAs. You mentioned that the supplier would have to get back to the complaint within two business days. Do you think that's sufficient enough? If there's no pickup, is business days sufficient enough? And secondly, what would be the, I guess that's one of the KPIs, but what would be a fine associated with the fact that they don't get back to a client within two days?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The two business days, something that we, we did discuss through ourselves and through customer service, it might be best with regard to that analysis to turn it over to Bonnie Munzal for that.
Bonnie, go ahead.
Two business days would be a bit of a distraction. We're seeing far less than that right now with our current provider and the per incident is $750 for every incident where they do not follow up within two business days.
So, the, my question would be is, if there's no pickup on a Friday, they would wait the whole weekend and then it still would be reasonable for the supplier to get back to the client on a Monday or Tuesday without a fine?
There are other penalties, if you will, in the contract for not completing collection by five o'clock or six o'clock on various evenings. So, that would probably kick in as well. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Regional Counselor.
Thanks. Yeah, that was the other, I wanted to ask a couple of questions about, and I've forgotten, so thank you. That two-days notion, does that get back to somebody in two days? So, what happens if the contractor says, "We're in receipt of your email, we'll be looking into this matter"? Does that qualify? And is there also a requirement for a definitive resolution? Not necessarily one that's what the person wants to hear, but a definitive resolution within a certain time period, i.e., not just we've heard from you, but we've looked into this matter and yes, you're correct, or we've looked into this matter and I'm sorry, we can't help you. And this is our final.
Bonnie?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Our expectation would be that there would be a definitive resolution within two days, two business days. Otherwise, the customer would know what, what is going on and what they can expect. But we don't want issues just laying out there, waiting for something to happen.
And do we feel comfortable that the language we use will protect for that as opposed to just somebody, the collector can say, "Well, I did respond in two days. I sent an email saying we're looking into it."
I do. Yeah.
Okay. The other area I wanted to ask was due diligence, detailed reference checks. Can you tell me about what, what they look like, the detailed reference check? What, what would that entail?
Unfortunately, the manager of procurement is not, not here today, but New Market has a very robust number of questions, documents to be filled out and follow-up with telephone conversations for reference checks. So, we have gone out to many of the municipalities that were mentioned by the proponents and we did a multitude for each of the proponents that submitted on this project.
Did we reach out to any communities that previously worked with the proponents that no longer work with the proponents?
Yes.
So, we've spoken to some who no longer with them?
That's correct.
Okay. And I get, my last question would be, did we have, I mean, I'm going to be frank, we have
Sorry. If I may, something that I was remiss to, to mention, with respect to reference checks, the reference checks, obviously not through us, but the manager of procurement did mention to some of us with, on the panel, that the reference checks for GFL, this proponent that we're recommending, was the best he's ever seen in his career from one of the, one of the cities.
From one of the cities?
Yes.
Okay. So, I guess the, I'm wondering, it's like, are, are we able to get data on, on other contractors, including a successful one, in other jurisdictions in terms of numbers of complaints, per number of households served, et cetera? And is that kind of data collected as part of this analysis? And the reason I'm asking is because, you know, stating the obvious a little bit, but it's easy to forget, but I think there was a number of counselors around this table and including myself, who were, who had, we had some very frustrating experiences with GFL at, at, at least one, if not two or three different periods of time and great deal of concern at that time. And I'm going to be honest, I, I'm, I'm concerned about moving forward because of that experience and I know we've put some measures in place to mitigate that, but, you know, a reference is one thing, but how, how do we know that the, the complaint numbers with other contractors? It could be probably more important than a reference. And so, were we able to get some of that data?
So, we do not have that particular data. We did not ask for that particular data for, but we did go into a large amount of detail with respect to the amount of, like, anecdotal, I guess, evidence of the amount of complaints that came in, but we do not have specific numbers from those municipalities that we use as reference checks.
Okay.
However, they, there were, there was mention of a, a large number, a small number, those sort of things. Those were mentioned in the reference checks for all three that we were checking on.
Final question before going to camera, I guess, assuming we are, but is, I believe you said this, but did we, we had a consultant that worked with the N6 through this and was there the consultant specifically in terms of ensuring that we followed every kind of process and requirement according to procurement possible to partially do ensure a fair and transparent process, but also to protect ourselves against future litigation? Was that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That, the consultant was taking a look at the industry and the best management practices and giving us some information from the industry. With respect to procurement and to legal, we actually had more help internally. We have our, our own procurement manager and he also did reach out to other experts in the procurement field and I will actually turn it over to the director of legal to talk about the multitude of, of legal experts that we were using.
Ms. Lister.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We did have external legal advice with respect to the preparation of, of the procurement documents and there was a couple of issues that came up along the way where we also got advice from that council, but we didn't have, I think what you're referring to is like a fairness monitor, which is often brought in.
Right.
No, we didn't have that on this contract.
Is that, and I, and it through to yourself, but also maybe to Mr. Nohammer or to Mr. Shelton, haven't we done that before and isn't that almost common with very large contracts to, to have that fairness monitor, if not for no other reason, obviously you want to be, to be fair, but to protect yourself later? Is that, I, I feel like we did that before once or twice on some larger.
Mr. Shelton?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We did that on one major item and I just, it's not coming to me immediately. I don't believe it was this type of a service contract. I think it was more a construction contract, but I, I could be wrong there. And I'd invite Peter to comment on that as well.
Mr. Nohammer?
Yeah, not since I've been with the town of New Market do I recall fairness consultant being involved. My former employer, we did involve fairness consultant as part of very large, you know, beyond 10-year, 20-year contracts, for instance, with transit shelters, street furniture provisions for 20-year-plus agreements, but I'm, I'm not familiar with any others since I've been here.
Okay. Thank you. And again, I'll just wait to hear power, what, if I'm in camera.
All right. I'll, I'll hear from Counselor Twenty and then I'll hear from our commissioner in terms of our, the appropriate process to go in camera. Go ahead.
With regards to customer service, so the procedure now is that residents may call our town of New Market customer service or are they now, are they directed to GFL? And is there, so the switch is going to be that all the calls will be going directly to GFL? So, what type, type of information is going to be sent out to the residents so that they understand exactly who they're calling and who they should be calling, I guess with the number, et cetera? What kind of hours will the customer service on GFL be, be having with regards to picking up live calls? And then, you talked about tracking, that we will be able to track, be able to go online or go and see their system of, of these number of complaints of, or, I mean, any tracking of these calls. So, just maybe just fill in the, the holes there for me about, you know, exactly how this, how this is going to, the procedure of it is, how and how we're going to lay it out or market it to, to the residents so they understand the, what's, what changes may be different moving forward.
Bonnie, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Right now, a lot of our material, if not all of our material, has the GFL contact information, their phone number, et cetera. Many of our residents do want to deal with us and they continue to do so and that's fine. We try to educate them, we try to de-escalate and when we have to, we do transfer the call to GFL and those are the numbers that you see up on the board there. And the calls that we would transfer to GFL might be driver behavior or lack of responsiveness. So, we will continue to promote the proponent with their 1-800 number, but we will still continue to take calls if our residents call us, but we will continue to remind them that there is a 1-800, 100 number for GFL. The expectation is that their call center is open until the routes are completed and there are fines, if you will, for routes that are, are not completed in a timely manner. We do, or we are expecting to have access to their reports real-time, so I will be able to go in or any of the customer service managers will be able to go in, look at what's happening on their CRM system. happening on their CRM system, and see what's, what's being delayed, what's not being resolved, and what customer issues are out there. And there's also expectations that we will receive, I think it's monthly reports, with all of the KPIs that are built into the contract.
And just to follow up with that, with regards to real-time tracking and build to going to their system and see that, would that be, say, personal information, say, "I called in and said that my garbage wasn't picked up," or it was, you know, whatever it may be, and I give my name and phone number or address, that we will build to see that information as well?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Vague?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Garbage pickup is one of the things that our residents take for granted, but it's also one of the most important things that we do. Just to follow up on councillor, a question posed by councillor 20, you mentioned that their customer service office, they'll be taking calls until, or they'll be open until the routes are completed. Quite often, residents, they may not get home until six, seven, eight at night, and they notice it wasn't picked up, but the routes are completed at five o'clock. Does that mean the customer service office closes at five? Also, our residents are, you know, if it's bad weather or for whatever reason, we're quite patient, and we think that the truck is just coming late, but by seven o'clock, we realize the truck is not coming, but the route was supposed to be completed at five o'clock. So that means there'll be nobody available after five o'clock, for instance, to take calls? Because you don't know that your waste has not been picked up until five, six, seven o'clock.
Bonnie, go ahead.
They do have after-hours provisions in the contract. I can't recall off the top of my head what they are. We do get some calls in our own after-hours service, and if it is an emergency, they do have contact information, who they can contact. If a whole street has been missed, for example, they can contact the GFL after-hours, or they can contact our after-hours. So we do have plans in place, and we use those now.
Oh, okay, but, you know, I've also heard from staff, they call and leave a message on a voicemail, and they hadn't had calls returned. But is there any possibility to have this extended somehow until about 7:00 p.m.? Because really, people don't know there's a problem. And I'm thinking particularly when that problem happens on a Friday. If it's on a Thursday, and they get a call in the morning, or they get the message in the morning, they get, come pick it up, et cetera, it's a little bit easier to deal with. But I'm thinking, again, on Fridays, people really don't know there's an issue until, because they've been patient, until six, seven, or eight o'clock, and it sounds like there'll be no response until Monday or Tuesday.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I do think there's something in the contract about after-hours expectations for the provider, but I don't recall what they are. Chris may remember.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to look, but I can provide that information after, as I can't remember if it's six or seven o'clock.
Okay.
That they have to be manned within the customer's call center. And then after that, as Bonnie mentioned, there is an after-hours service.
Okay. So maybe if you can give a bit of information on what that after-hour service is, because it may just be a voicemail, leave a message, and we'll get back to you in the morning, which is a very high level of service, particularly on a Friday, we, then we'll get back to you until Monday.
I guess there's a bit of a challenge in that, and that is, is that we've gone through some extensive negotiations. We've set up the performance standards, we've set out the guidelines. I'm not sure that it would be appropriate for us to modify anything that was not already reflected in the RFP as well, so just wanted to take a look at that.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Zans?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions with respect to the plans for public communication and education around garbage pickup and recycling, and how involved will GFL be in that process? I'm thinking in particular, concern that I often got from residents was that, that they would be putting stuff in their bins or in their garbage, you know, the same way every time, and all of a sudden, one day, they come home and the garbage was left behind, or the bins were left behind, and there may or may not have been an "oops" sticker, but by the time they would call and try and get ahold of someone to tell them why their garbage wasn't picked up, they were told, "It's because you've been throwing something you shouldn't throw in there." So it was more sort of a concern about lack of consistency. So they, they said, "Well, I never had a problem before, so all of a sudden, you know, why is it an issue?" And particularly on weekends, it was a challenge for people if they had to take their garbage bags back into, into their garages and wait, you know, for another week. So is, was there an emphasis or a sort of discussion on what they will do and the role that they'll play in supporting the municipalities and educating, and what degree of leniency might they have with, with residents so that there's sort of some, some warning before they just don't pick up the garbage or the bins?
Mr. Conlitt?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That is actually something that we talk about in our operational meetings on our quarterly basis with the managers and coordinators throughout the N6. So within this contract, similar to the last one, there are truck decals that are going to be changed out every two years or so, that have a promotion and education aspect on the trucks themselves. We've actually partnered with York Region a few times to, to discuss a few of those things with, on the decals, whether they be plastic bags within the recycling bin, whether they be styrofoam, I think is our, is our current advertisement. So that is within the contract, that the decals do have to be changed out. So then that is, that is a cost to the contractor here, but all the promotion and education is done between ourselves, the rest of the N6, and oftentimes, York Region. So we do have media blitz. With the start date of the collection of the material being January 2018, we actually have time to prepare the calendar that has a lot of the promotion and education on them with respect to that. Going back to the enforcement situation that you mentioned, again, those are part of the quarterly discussions, whether it is enforcing something that always should be enforced, or throughout the N6 being fairly consistent. Those are the kind of discussions that happen at those meetings. There has been a few, a couple of times within those meetings where we've noted that if there is something that the contractor is about to enforce that they never enforced before, even though they always should have, if all of a sudden we say, "Well, we're having these issues, you really need to enforce this," we're actually going to have communications do a PNE for a number of weeks before that actually happens now. So communications started coming to those meetings about a year-ish so ago, maybe a little bit less than that. So again, their involvement with respect to that type of enforcement is extremely important.
Okay. Yeah, it is important. Thank you.
So what's a PNE?
Sorry, promotion and education.
All right. Thank you. Good. Okay, now, Esther, your advice, process, we need two-thirds majority?
Yeah. So usually, Mr. Mayor, where a matter is to be considered or discussed in closed session, wherever possible, written notice is to be provided. So there wasn't a notice on this agenda for a closed session, but council committee can suspend the rules upon a two-thirds majority vote. And if that's what committee wishes to do, then you can close, you can make a motion that a portion of the meeting be closed to the public as provided for in the municipal act, together with the general nature of the matter to be considered in closed session.
Okay. Thank you. Before we do that, I just wanted to clarify with respect to the incentives. Are these incentives due to each municipality, therefore, these numbers times seven?
Mr. Mayor, no, these are for all of the N6.
Okay. And to what extent do we capture the volume metric? Is that, I know that we've got specified price, does that make some assumptions about volumes? And if volumes go up substantially, how's that captured?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, absolutely correct. So what we did is we based the numbers on the 2016 numbers, and actually, we took a look at the two previous years. Those are what we put out for the contract. So it's actually on the unit prices. The unit prices are the per kilogram price for the different streams, whether they be yard waste, source separated organics, garbage, recycling, et cetera. So just like with any of the capital projects, an estimating amount of asphalt, for example, on a, on a construction site, it's based on a per-unit rate with an estimate of how much it would be approximately.
Okay. And those volumes were the volumes we had audited by our internal auditor, in addition to York Region? I think we, we had our internal auditor do a volume audit as well. Is that not correct, Mr. Shelton?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct. With the internal audit service for the N6, we use the region of York, and it is outsourced if necessary. But what we started probably six years ago or so is, on an every-year basis, and then we moved to every other year, we would have our internal audit take a look at contract performance and performance of our directors in managing the contract.
Thank you. I like the idea of having some incentives to modify behavior. If we rely solely on penalties, then I'm sure that the contractors generally provide for those penalties, whereas incentives creates the energy for them to, to exceed their, the performance expectations. So thank you. It's been a lot of work, a lot of hard work, Chris, and I want to thank you for all the work that you've done, not just for our municipality, but also for the N6 group and the ability to be able to build consensus amongst those individuals. I will entertain a motion if we do wish to go in camera. And, okay, the motion, is there a second for that motion? Councillor 20, now we require a two-thirds majority, all those in favor.
I would speak first.
Okay, sure. All right. I was assuming that it was going to qualify, but go ahead, and you can clarify.
I suspect we need to provide, and I don't know if staff provides it, but we need to provide some context, I would assume. Would we be looking for suggested wording? I think you know what the topic is, or am I to provide it?
I think it's, I don't know what you're going to say, so you'll have to indicate the general nature.
Well, I've indicated it, so I'm asking if staff would like to provide the wording, or would they like me to take a stab at it, which I'm probably not the person to do it.
So through, through you, Mr. Mayor, if I understand the request correctly, I believe that it would be advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege related to the N6 waste contract and the report that is before you today.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
All right. So we have a second for that?
I guess, I don't know if it's, I don't know what the, and if it doesn't qualify, I guess that's the conundrum we're in, but I want to be clear and direct. What I'm looking for may involve legal advice, but particularly, I'm looking for the numbers related to this contract. And if that falls under something else, or if it can't be public, then surely there's a mechanism for me to discuss it in private. If that area, there might be some legal advice related to that information, whether it's disclosed or not, but I certainly would like that.
And I believe this is the conundrum that's contained in Bill 68, which is what, what is eligible for in-camera discussions, and what proprietary information? And so I'll let our solicitors--
Right. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think you've, you've addressed it directly. There is, there is currently a slight inconsistency between what's protected by the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, which refers to documents, and it would cover the memorandums that I sent to in advance of this meeting, and the minutes black, which lists the, the reasons that you can go in-camera. So typically, you can't go in-camera for confidential negotiations related to something other than property. But in this particular instance, the questions you've asked, while they do relate to the price, are linked to solicitor-client privilege, because I've given you advice on whether or not that can be disclosed in public. So I think, I don't think there's any other exception to the rules in terms of going in closed session that would, that would apply. I think the only one that would apply would be the solicitor-client advice.
Right. And to be honest, I think it does apply, because I'd also like to know, I need to know the information--
Yeah.
--to know how close the bids are and what leeway council has legally to act in a variety of options based upon information we will receive. I'd like to also make one statement, though, that I did, I, while it's not, and I'm asking for a two-thirds majority to go in-camera, I did, and I apologize, but I believe I sent an email asking that we talk about this in-camera if necessary, so that it's not on the agenda. I believe I sent that. And I go a step further, is that, I think, well, we review in our process, but I think, while I know we rely on staff for a lot of professional advice, if this council has to sit and put up its hand for an 80 to 100 million dollar contract, I think we need to go in-camera to discuss all options, including this discussion we're having, until the system's changed. And so I would like to think that would be automatically a placeholder in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? And opposed, that is carried. I'll request the audience to leave, go in camera. So. We're waiting for the technology. Are we there? Okay, we do have one item on this agenda, and that is Development and Protective Services' Public Services Report, number 2006-30. It's relative to the garbage and recycling, separated, source separated organics contract. The recommendations are before you. Can I have a motion, please? Regional councillor?
I'll make a motion to refer this to council this evening.
Is there a second for that? Second by councillor vague, yes. Mr. Shelton?
Mr. Mayor, just before you vote on that, I did want to go back to one item about the new trucks. Just, I did talk to the director very quickly, and I wanted to make sure that this point was made, so you can think about this this evening as well. But when the proposal went out looking for new trucks from the beginning of the contract, the point was raised by the regional councillor at that time, you know, there was not the knowledge that the existing contractor might be the successful proponent. So I have confirmed with the director that in the event that the, that if this does go in this direction, and the existing contractor puts forward the idea of making use of any used equipment, we will be in accordance with the RFP, looking for a benefit for that. So I just thought I would make sure that you're aware of that point.
Okay. Thank you. So the motion then is, regional councillor?
So, I know, again, can't, maybe we'll discuss later on tonight, but is there any issue with other contractors then saying, "I wish I'd known I could adjust my price according to different equipment," and is there a risk there?
I think that, my game, sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Shelton.
We do not have the manager here, but typical of our proposals, once you enter into the contract, you do have negotiating rights, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? So this is to refer this matter to council this evening. All those in favor? Any opposed? None, that's carried. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Councillor 20, councillor Quapis? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. It's been a long day.